Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here. We have the Apopka City Council Candidate Forum. We have four candidates here who are going to tell us all about themselves and why we should vote for them. So I welcome you. My name is Hank Dunn. I'm the moderator for this evening. I am going to try to be fair, but we're also going to try to keep you to the time as well so that we can move this thing along. So this event is sponsored by the Apopka Chief and concerned citizens who live in Rock Springs Ridge who are just seeking to understand what the candidates have to offer and how they see the issues of our community. The issue is designed to fill the seat vacated unfortunately by Alice Nolan, and we want to broadcast this to the larger community. So I'm sure you already know that not only the few of us that are here in the audience, but you have a whole, hopefully lots of people tuning in to see you online. So we appreciate that. We appreciate you being honest, candid about your answers, and we look forward to hearing from you. We want to welcome you officially, and what I would like to do is just start with Jessie here at the end and just introduce yourself. And then after we introduce, I'll have a few more announcements, and we'll come back and give you a chance to just introduce more about two minutes. So say hello and hi.
Hi, everybody. My name is Yasenia Jessie Baron, and I am running for the city of Apopka Council Seat Two. Thank you so much for the opportunity for opening up. Much better. Hi, everybody. My name is Yasenia Jessie Baron, and I'm running for City of Apopka Council Seat Two. It is such a pleasure to be with everybody, everyone tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity for opening up this forum to us, and thanks also to the residents of Rock Springs Ridge for their consideration as well. It's a pleasure.
Thank you. We'll come back here. Yeah. Jean?
My name is Jean Knight. I'm running for City Commissioner, Seat Two. I'd also like to thank Rock Springs Ridge to set this up for us.
Yeah, we'll come back here and give you two minutes to talk more.
Yeah, okay.
Nick?
How you doing? My name is Nick Nesta, running for Seat Two, City of Apopka Commission. Thank you so much, Rock Springs Ridge, for setting this up. Really appreciate it. And I thank you Doug Banks and Victory Church for allowing us to use your facility. This is great, especially during pandemic. We really appreciate you allowing us to use this. Thank you.
Diane?
Okay. Good afternoon. It's a late afternoon. My name is Diane Velazquez, and I also want to thank the Rock Springs Ridge residents and of course the Victory Church for opening up this venue for us and allowing us to at least express and kind of showcase who we are. And I'm running for City Commission, Seat Number Two.
Wonderful. We'll come back to everybody here. We're going to give every candidate is going to have two minutes to actually answer questions that we've developed. There will be no rebuttals, and we're not asking your colleagues to jump in like some people have done this week. We're just asking you to tell us about you, right? So that'll be that way is clear. If there's a clarification or I think it needs to be more fully developed in some way, I'll ask it for the audience and ourselves. We're going to start at one end and work our way back. So first question will go this way, then we'll start with the head and go the other way. So we'll give everybody a fair chance here. We would like to remind everyone on stage and in the audience to please make sure your phones are off or muted so we don't have any of that going on. For the audience members, if you are leaving at any time during this broadcast, please use the back door, not the side door, because we are on camera and we don't want to just mess up with anybody's viewing pressure. At the end of the answer period, we'll give all of you candidates another two minutes to talk about why somebody should vote for you. So between now and then. So at this point, let's begin with Jessie again and just give you two minutes to talk about yourself and why you're running.
Fantastic. Thank you again. My name is Yasenia Jessie Baron, and I'm running for City of Apopka Council Seat Two. I'm running because I love the City of Apopka. Our family has been here eight years, and we have dove into our community, really advocating and being servants to our community. Just basically my career, I'm a retired special agent from the Department of Law Enforcement, and I have spent my career in giving a voice to those that do not have a voice. And I want to be able to do that in the DAOS. I want to be able to be the voice to our community, be able to really set the opportunity for a fresh perspective, for giving the opportunity to our, myself, to our residents that I can basically bring their vision that I would like to bring to the DAOS, make sure my vision is their vision, and that I'm being that voice for them moving forward. I want to create a live here, work here, play here environment for our community. We deserve it, and I want to be able to work with the current council and our administration to move our city forward and take that opportunity to leverage the amenities and the things that we have here in our city and really be able to keep our money here, keep our hard working money here in the City of Apopka, and be able to make sure that we are creating a wonderful character city that we have here and be able to be that voice moving forward. So thank you so much. I'm Yasenia Baron, and I'm running for City of Apopka Council Seat Two.
Thank you. Jean?
Yeah, some of the reasons I'm running is, you know, part of it is the downtown center. I believe that it's taken too long to build the buildings they need to build over there, and I think tourists is dragging their feet on that. I know the city not, you know, they had 10 years to build out there. So I want to get that moving faster because I want people to come to Apopka, you know, to eat here, work here, and all that. But coming into Apopka, we need to make it look better coming into Apopka because it just looks bad, some of the old buildings still standing, and some of the landscaping is bad. So we want to make sure that we get that going to have people want to stay and eat here and shop here. Also, some of the other things is like Rock Springs Ridge, I know they're having an issue with houses being built out there. So I want to work on that with them as much as possible and do what I can to help out because I'm against building more homes out there. Because if I bought something, you know, and they never said anything about building homes out there, it would upset me also because I bought my house for a reason out there. And also the Earl Estates issue on their golf course, too. They have some of the same issues. I'd like to work with them on that and get that settled. The budget and hiring more people because we're short-staffed in Apopka. A lot of people either resigned or was let go. The sanitation, Fire Department, Police Department are all understaffed, and that's something I would like to work on to make sure we're sustaining our growth and everything, you know, because we were kind of behind on the infrastructure because we're building pretty fast on that. So that's some of the things I'm running on. Thanks.
Thank you, Jean. Nick?
Thank you again for your time. So I've been a real estate broker here in the area for a little over 10 years now. Started my company here locally in 2013. Been serving the citizens of Apopka since then. It's been absolutely incredibly been able to do that. Through that, I've been able to help people get into great situations and get out of bad situations. One of my greatest strengths is problem solving. We need to be able to problem solve through our financial issues that we have right now. The COVID pandemic has created such an incredible layer of complexity through municipalities, through homeowners, through associations, homeowner associations, that we need somebody that understands, that can problem solve through this and think intellectually and think creatively. That's going to be our key to moving forward as an HOA, as a city, and as citizens, is creatively thinking how to grow our city correctly without increasing taxes arbitrarily just because we're lower than some other municipalities in the area. We're a unique community, and we need to be able to tap into that advantage of our unique community that we have. Our ecotourism is absolutely incredible, and that's why a lot of people do move here, and we need to make sure that we're tapping into these things and marketing them correctly. And one of my favorite things that I love is that I met my wife here. She's absolutely incredible. She's a teacher here, and I understand education directly. She's in and out of it every single day. She has her own frustrations, and through that, I understand her frustration. So I understand how to advocate correctly for teachers, educators, and students in the area, and now parents who are unfortunately turning into teachers even though they didn't want to maybe. I understand how to correctly advocate for them. So that's the platform we're running on. I think we're best suited and most well-rounded up here to be able to handle what the city is dealing with right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Diane?
Hi. First of all, I'm a six resident here in the City of Apopka. I served as the former commissioner here from 2014 to 2018, and then followed with my appointed position. Hello? Okay. Orange, for Orange County Planning and Zoning Board. I came here with my husband in 2005 and my son, and we have been actively involved in the community. There's several organizations that I have actively been a member of, one of them the Women's Club. I do the Kiwanis Club. I do the Miss Apopka Competition. We're members of both the VFW and the Elks Lodge, where I work hand-in-hand with my husband, where we host dinners and luncheons for our retired veterans. And a reason why I continued working even after as a commissioner was because I was involved in the schools. I'm active with the schools and the students. I have a passion for students. And also one of my highlights is the 9/11 memorial that I worked on with Christian Lempier that has been sort of a passion for me. And, you know, that's one of the reasons why I decided to kind of come back into this race with only 17 months left in the term. I feel that my experience and the time that I did work for the people in the City of Apopka that I can continue to do that for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Well, we're going to go ahead and get right into it with the questions, so I thank you candidates for that. And we're going to start with Ms. Baron. So here is the first question. You will all get the same question, so don't worry. "In the Apopka City Charter, the role of a city commissioner is not well-defined, which gives commissioners an opportunity to define it for themselves. If elected, how will you define your role as a city commissioner?"
That is a fantastic question. I think as a commissioner, my role would make sure that I'm, again, that voice, communicating with the residents, communicating with our community, making sure that we are representing our city and our residents the best that we can. And we are the voice on that DAOS. We are the voice to our community. If you look at our org chart, we, that's, it's our citizens, and then it's our council. So as a commissioner, my job will be to make sure that I am voicing the concerns of our residents, to make sure that I am making, bringing forward the concerns and the celebrations that they have, as well as the concerns that they have, to the DAOS, and make sure that we're representing the city the best that we can. My other goal is to make sure that, you know, with the different projects that we have, I want to be able to leverage, again, the opportunities that we have here in Apopka. We have fantastic amenities here that we're not leveraging on, and we need to make sure that we're reinvesting in our community. And I want to be able to do that at the DAOS, working along with the other councils as well as our, as well as that administration, to make sure that that's what's moving, that's what we're doing, is we're moving the city forward. And my logo is "Let's Be Committed to Apopka's Future Together." So my goal is to make sure that I am being that voice, being that advocate, being that servant to our community, and I'm able to make sure that I'm facilitating their requests to the best that I can in the position in which I have, and to make sure that, again, I am that voice for the DAOS. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knight, same question, and be happy to repeat it if you'd like.
Yeah, I want to.
Okay. "In the city, Apopka City Charter, the role of a city commissioner is not well-defined, which gives commissioners an opportunity to define it for themselves. If elected, how will you define your role as a city commissioner?"
Well, first of all, you have to listen to the citizens. They have the voice out there. They're electing us to make sure that we listen to them and help them out with what they want. The only problem I've seen that commissioners haven't done is when you become a commissioner, you got to help every community, just not one. And it's like in my area, I get some help from some of the commissioners, but some I didn't because they, you know, I'm in a middle-class neighborhood, I'm not in a high-class neighborhood, and we don't get a lot of help out there. And I know there's plenty of them out there that needs help from the city, you know, fixing up their neighborhoods and stuff. And that's where we come in, is find out what they want and help them out with that. Also, I think we should keep up on our parks and stuff like that as a commissioner for the community to have a place to go. We did that one on Lake Avenue a couple of years ago, a good, nice playground that helped out in that area. So that's another thing I would like to do. As a commissioner, you should be doing that. Basically, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Nesta, same thing? I'm happy to repeat the question if needed.
No, I'm good. Thank you. This is a great question and one that I've actually ran across a lot. As I'm door knocking, people say, "I don't understand what you do. I don't understand why I would even vote in general for you because I don't understand how you impact me." The answer I've come up with that I absolutely think is kind of the most wholesome one is we're lifestyle creators here in Apopka. We directly impact how your lifestyle is as a resident in Apopka, whether it's through taking care of the roads, whether it's taking care of parks, whether it's influencing development one way or the other. We impact your lifestyle, and that's why people move here, is that we've had a lot of great things happen specifically here in Apopka that helps our lifestyle. One that I absolutely enjoy, and I run many miles around this, is Northwest Recreation Complex. I absolutely love that. The amount of tournaments we've had out there and brought in other communities into ours that spend their dollars at our small businesses, whether it's Chuck's Wagon or Robinson's or whatever it may be, eating breakfast, having coffee, that's incredible. And I think that's our key as commissioners, is to lifestyle impact, to impact everybody's lifestyle correctly in a way that makes sense. So to echo Jean a little bit as well, we need to be listening to the needs and understanding how we're going to impact, how our choices really impact, and if it's going to be positive, negative, and make sure that we're creating the lifestyle we want. I, like I said, met my wife here, and we've helped to, I feel through her education and my real estate, we've been able to create a nice little lifestyle for ourselves here. And I want to do that on a bigger level now and be able to impact people positively through lifestyle creation. We also think that with that lifestyle creation comes fiscal responsible budgeting. I think that's going to be key moving forward as well. Through this pandemic, it's created such a unique scenario that I think that problem solving is going to be key, and like I said before, that that's going to help to create an even better lifestyle creator scenario for the citizens of Apopka. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Velazquez, happy to repeat the question if needed.
Would you?
I will. "In the Apopka City Charter, the role of a city commissioner is not well-defined, which gives commissioners an opportunity to define it for themselves. If elected, how will you define your role as a city commissioner?"
That's a role that I had already performed between 2014 and 2018. And one of the things, well, many of the things that I had started to do when I first became commissioner was to go out into the community, support a lot of the city events. Then I started going into the schools and supporting their events and attending the events because what I felt was important during my time as a commissioner was to have the visibility and to actually engage our community, to have them understand the process in the City Hall. And I wanted them, a lot of them didn't even know who the mayor was, who their council members were. They didn't understand the process. So when I started to go out into the communities and really just engaging with, you know, the residents, even at a school level, the students, I went to the high schools, I attended their Broadway plays, and I joined the Reading for Heroes. I started reading to the kids. And it was really a way of connecting from the youngest to the oldest. And I started to attend different churches in the City of Apopka because that was another way of connecting with the residents here in the City of Apopka. I just think it's so important for the members of the city council to be out and visible for all the residents that live in the City of Apopka.
Okay. Thank you. Second question, and we're going to begin that question with Mr. Knight, so you're up. "If you were elected, what policies would you support to protect residents' property investments and their ability to accumulate wealth on their investments from encroaching
Like I said, you know, Rock Springs Ridge, for instance, you know, they want to build homes out there, and it's going to devalue some of their property out there. And I know a lot of people don't want to be built on right behind their house when they had the golf course, so that's one thing. I think, can you read that again? I'm sorry, I forgot.
Sure. "If you were elected, what policies would you support to protect residents' property investments and their ability to accumulate wealth on their investments from encroaching developments?"
Well, the policies, I would guess, I might have to pass on. I have to look that up.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Mr. Nesta, would you like me to repeat the question?
I'm good. Thank you. I think the policy is already there in place, especially specifically, let's speak, because it's Rock Springs Ridge, I'll speak specifically to Rock Springs Ridge. As a resident of Rock Springs Ridge as well, this impacts me and my family very directly, so I have a very clear understanding of what we're dealing with here. And I think, number one, it's development rights. Do the developers have rights on this land? It's not an opinion-based thing. They either do or they don't, and we need to refine that and figure that out. Obviously, there's a debate about it, which is why we're here, and we've been here since they've closed the course, I think in 2009 if I remember correctly. And it's been a debate since then, it seems like. So policies are already in place. We need to refine them a little bit and make sure we understand whether a developer does or does not have rights. And let's speak specifically to, or a little more broad, to development in Apopka. People, the majority of people we've spoken with do not prefer development because they feel that our schools are being overrun, and I completely agree with them. Schools are being built functionally obsolete from day one. They're being built with portables in mind. As my wife, my wife is a teacher, again, 10-plus years. She taught in a portable and had to teach, bring her kids to and from her specials and lunch in rain, in cold, in heat. And she also had a wasp nest, I guess, at one point, because before she was murdered me, I would have taken care of it otherwise. But that was an issue that we had to deal with and that she would deal with. And I think that's the biggest issue. It's not so much development is bad, it's that OCPS and Orange County Public Schools is not keeping up with our development, and they're building functionally obsolete schools in our area. And that's going to be key to ensuring that we have investments that are growing correctly and making sure that our property rights aren't infringed on. Again, we need to understand this developer's property rights and move forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Velazquez, would you like me to repeat the question?
No.
Okay.
It's already in place, how we build these developments. We do that because we have a staff at the City Hall. You have a staff that determines what the land codes are and the land zones are for the different land, the proposed developments. So the developer comes in through City Hall, and he goes through the process. So how we, as council members, when it comes before us, it's already gone through DRC, which is the Development, redevelopment unit, and then it goes through planning and zoning, and then it, lastly, comes to us. So it's already in place, and what we do is to make sure that they are in compliance and that the neighboring developments are equal or similar so that we are building communities that are cohesive with each other. So we are already doing that with the City of Apopka. That's not something that the commissioners decide. They actually just review what's been approved, and if there's some negotiation for some additional products that should be added to the development, that is something that we work on. So that's, I feel that it's already in place.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Baron, same question. Would you like me to repeat it?
No. Thank you. So basically, the policy that I would, I would implement is making sure that we, as a council, obviously, like Ms. Velazquez had said, you know, it goes before the various committees, before it comes to us. And it's our responsibility to make sure that we are certain that, one, that it's not affecting the community in a negative fact, in a negative way. So we got to make sure that we can reach out to the HOA, let them know that this is what's happening, let them know that these, this information is coming, and to make sure that there is not a restrictive covenant that wording in the HOA's policies. We got to make sure that we are representing the developers, not the developers, I'm sorry, developments, the homeowners, that we are representing them the best way we can, and to ensure that because somebody just appears before our council with the request of developing is something that we should agree to. We have to make sure that we are keeping in mind and understanding what is going to be impacted around that neighborhood, not just the one neighborhood, but the ripple effect of what's going to happen surrounding that neighborhood. So if we make a decision that could impact not just that development, but also the surrounding developments, that could leave a negative factor long before we leave the DAOS. So we, as a, what I would like to do is, policy-wise, is to make sure that, one, I'm sitting down with the committee to say, "Okay, walk me through your processes so then I am aware how you come to the decision that you make sure that it comes to us." If it comes to us and there's disagreement to that, then that's where we, as a council, need to make sure that we are vocalizing what that is. That's what I would like to change.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Nesta, you're up next for the first question, or the next question, and it is, "Many residents are concerned about Apopka's recent housing development growth pattern, which seems to be outpacing city resources such as fire and police and also our local schools capacity, which you've pointed out. What is your position regarding growth given these concerns? And if elected, what criteria or rationale would you use to approve new subdivisions?"
Thank you. That's a very long question. So in reference to, and like you had said, that I already hit the school point, the education side of it, we, we need to make sure we have an advocate on the city council that is going to outreach to these Orange County, to the representatives of Orange County Public Schools to make sure that they understand what our needs are. That's going to be key to moving forward, to make sure that we're not impacted negatively here in Apopka, which we already have been with overrun schools and developments that have been growing our tax basis, which is great. It's growing the amount of income we're getting as a city without having to increase taxes for the rest of us, but at the same time, it's affecting our resources. And that's something that we need an advocate that understands how that's going to impact us. And through that, we, again, we are getting increased tax basis, but we also need to be working on strategically approving developments, making sure that if it's going to increase the capacity of a school, that we're working directly with Orange County Public Schools, bringing them into the conversation to say, "Let's build this together. Don't stay out of the communication. Don't let me just build a community and then the school, somebody's learning in a portable. I hope to raise my kids here someday in the future, and I don't want my kid learning from a portable. I think that's unacceptable. I don't think teachers should be teaching from portables. That's unacceptable." So having an advocate on that level is going to be key to understanding how to communicate effectively to Orange County Public Schools. And then in reference to actual, the criteria for development, I think that's key. I think it's just bringing in Orange County Public Schools, bringing in the residents in the area, and making sure that they are part of the conversation as we move forward. That's going to be key to make sure that our development is not getting out of hand but being controlled and creating a cohesive plan that fits within that. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Velazquez, same question. Would you like me to repeat it? I will. It is a very long question. Sorry about that. "Many residents are concerned about Apopka's recent housing development growth pattern, which seems to be outpacing city resources..." city resources such as fire and police, and also affecting our local schools' capacities. What is your position regarding growth given these concerns? And also, if elected, what criteria or rationale would you use to approve new subdivisions?
When they come in for development, they do go through the process of the city staff. And at that time, there's a determination of impact fees and what the impact of their development is going to be in our community, which includes the infrastructure, includes the schools. And at that time, the developer is told or informed of what it will cost to build in the city of Apopka. And I feel that, I know that when they're in city hall and they are going through the process, the staff is representative of the city, and they understand the impact of these developments. What I would do differently would probably be to make sure that when we approve these new developments, is to make sure that at the same time, we are increasing our staff, especially fire and the fire, police, and actually the sanitation. That when those impact fees do come in, that we at least work toward either hiring additional staff in order to support the future of those new residences that are coming into our city.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Barron, same question. Happy to repeat if needed.
If you could, please.
I, and it is very-
I tried to kneel down as you went-
It's very long. No problem whatsoever.
Please, thank you.
Many residents are concerned about Apopka's recent housing development growth pattern, which seems to be outpacing city resources such as fire and police, and also our schools, our local schools' capacities. What is your position regarding growth given these concerns? And also, if elected, what rationale or criteria would you use to approve new subdivisions?
Thank you. So, I think, right now, there needs to be just a slowdown, and for a couple reasons. One, we need to start building relationships, not just with our school board member, our district school board member, but also our legislature, because they are the ones that determine the budget moving forward. So, we have to make sure that we're advocating for our community. So, what does that mean? That means when session's in place, guess who's going to Tallahassee? Because I want to make sure that I'm communicating with my legislature, so my legislature knows and is aware, moving forward, what is going on in our city and the growth that is happening. That is what I would like to do implementing when I, when I become commissioner. I want to make sure that I'm that voice up in Tallahassee moving forward. When it comes to our growth, we need to be strategic. Our growth is fantastic because everybody's coming here. However, at the same time, we need to make sure that we are strategically planning that. And what does that look like? To make sure, to make sure that we are putting in place, the developers are putting in place amenities for our community, not just for the, not just for that development, but for the community. So, if you are bringing in some type of housing, you're making sure that there's an amenity that is accessible to the surrounding neighborhoods, that you are also responsible for making sure that we are being able to create a live here, work here, play here environment. It's not just up to our city. We have to make sure that developers are just as responsible as we are in leveraging that. So, as a commissioner, I would make sure that that is what's happening, and we are leveraging that opportunity with the developers and building those relationships with the school board member, as well as our legislature moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Knight, the same question, and I'd be happy to repeat it because it is a long question.
Yeah, police.
Yes. Many residents are concerned about Apopka's recent housing growth development patterns, which seem to be outpacing city resources such as fire and police, and also our local schools' capacities. What is your position regarding growth given these concerns? And if elected, what criteria or rationale would you use to approve new subdivisions?
I think as city commissioner, I think we should, I think this is something we should look at when building new neighborhoods. Eventually, we're going to run out of room in schools. They're already overcrowded. I see they're building another one, but our, our building homes are moving so fast, we can't keep up. So, we need to keep pressure on Orange County and the state to have these schools, especially for Apopka, built a little bit faster than what we're getting them. So, that's one thing. And as in the infrastructure, we are short police, fire, maintenance crews, sanitation, those we need to have in place when we're building new homes and stuff like that, because right now, the city can't even keep up with the maintenance around Apopka with what we already have. So, that's something we need to really work on, get it in the budget. I know it's hard to get in the budget this time because of the coronavirus. I know we raised taxes, and that's going to put $400,000, I think, $40,000 into the budget from the new taxes. But, as a commissioner, we need to make sure that that's in place before we approve any new building, so our, you know, especially our schools and our kids can be taught more one-on-one instead of in a crowded classroom.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Velasquez, you're up first this time, and here is the question. Residents' perception of the present city development growth scheme is that the city actively encourages urban sprawl, which drives up the cost of services. What policies would you champion to address and curb urban sprawl?
Well, urban sprawl, what it does is it creates, I'm trying to get the words. The urban sprawl creates a, a community where the impact of the water, the stormwater negatively impacts our community. When you build communities where there's more density, you have less to care for with the, with the, with the, oh my God, and I feel so bad that I did this. Please repeat the question, because I kind of got lost in that thought there.
Sure.
And I apologize.
Residents' perception of the present city development growth scheme is that the city actively encourages urban sprawl, which drives up the cost of services. What policies would you champion to address and curb urban sprawl?
Much more density in communities. When you have much more density, you have less urban sprawl, because urban sprawl makes a bigger home. It impacts the stormwater, the services that we have to provide in order to keep that development going. So, absolutely, density would be the best for, to prevent urban spoil, sprawl.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Barron, the question's for you. Would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, please.
Residents' perception of the present city development growth scheme is that the city actively encourages urban sprawl, which drives up the cost of services. What policies would you champion to address and curb urban sprawl?
So, what I would make sure is if, if moving forward, that begins, we, we need to think about our natural resources that we have in the city of Apopka. We have Wakava Springs, we have Rock Springs, which both already are impacted by the development around the springs that have brought up the pesticides, the nitrates levels, as well as Lake of Apopka. So, we've got to make sure that if, if moving forward with these, we can't control the growth, but we can make sure that it does not impact our natural resources that are surrounding the city of Apopka. That is something that we can control. That's something that is working, that we are actively working on, just within the county commission, as well as our state level, and making sure that we have our, our natural resources in Apopka are taken care of. What I would like to do moving forward as a commissioner is ensuring that we, we are conducting a needs assessment and making sure that needs assessment, that we are actively promoting the, the, the health of our environment, making sure that we are setting those processes in place moving forward, because as the growth comes, we need to be able to make sure we're ahead of that before, before we are in a position where, like Lake of Apopka, where we have to, to clean it up. So, my policies as a commissioner in that, in that would be making sure how, how the responsibility would have to lie on the developer, how they would impact the natural springs, our green spaces, what is that going to do, especially like with our golf course and arable estates. There's a concern of, of whether or not the different materials and minerals and other toxins that happen could create an issue.
Thank you. Mr. Knight, same question. Happy to repeat it if needed. The question was, residents' perception of the present city development growth scheme is that the city actively encourages urban sprawl, which drives up the cost of services. What policies would you champion to address and curb urban sprawl?
I would champion basically a lot of what Ms. Barron said. We, we, we need, we need to make sure that things are in place before we build closer to Rock Springs or Wakava Springs. You know, you get a lot of runoff, you know. We need to make sure the infrastructure's in, in place to where it don't affect these places, because, I mean, we don't have much left in Apopka. You know, you know what happened to Lake of Apopka with the farms, all the chemical, messed up Lake of Apopka. Now, we're cleaning it up, and it's still going to take a long time. So, I would basically do, do like Ms. Barron said. So, that's where I'm at on it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nesta, same question. Happy to repeat if needed.
I don't need to repeat it, thank you. And what an interesting question, too, because I feel that the majority of people, I know my wife and I choose to live in Apopka due to the urban sprawl. We enjoy large lots. I think that's one of the things that people champion in Rock Springs Ridge, which is one of the keys right now, large lots, open spaces. I think a lot of people enjoy that. So, we're a unique community, and we have unique needs within the city. And I think, just because we have increased services, I think that's an okay sacrifice to make, to enjoy the lifestyle that we get here. Again, we're lifestyle creators as commissioners, and I want to be able to keep the large lot that we're on. We're not a three-quarter acre lot. I can't get that in Winter Park. I can, it's a different price range. And that's something that we enjoy about Apopka, and that's why a lot of the people move to Apopka. I have people that want to maybe buy in Lake Mary or wherever it may be, but Apopka is where the lots are at. It's where you get just incredible views. You get incredible rolling topography. That's incredible. So, I think, even taking that away, and it's a little scary that Commissioner, that candidate Velasquez had higher density. I, I am so against higher density. That's scary to me. We enjoy such an incredible community with large lots and, and space. And I think, again, that's what creates Apopka and makes Apopka what is so desired to buyers right now, and why we're seeing some incredibly record-high prices in Apopka. I mean, it's amazing what the real estate market's doing right now, and understanding that part of that is due to large lots and, and that urban sprawl. We don't want higher density. And I think that's going to be key. So, I think possibly having higher impact fees, and we can calculate, should a new community take over X amount of more services, let's charge that developer higher impact fees. And again, because we're seeing record-high prices, the developers have the ability to build these in. They have the profit centers built in already. So, I don't think density is the, the fix here. I think we enjoy the urban sprawl. I just think we can, again, get creative with how we create the income to pay for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we are back to Ms. Barron again for this question, and it is a long one as well, so apologies. Residents have complained that the structure of the current community meetings relative to encroaching developments does not afford the residents the right to negotiate and mitigate items such as density, traffic, buffering, and connectivity with developers, which would be memorialized into a developer's agreement. If elected, how would you change the structure of the current community meetings to afford residents the right to negotiate with developers to accomplish meaningful resolution of concerned issues?
I think, again, that's where my platform is, is to be that voice. So, to have that opportunity to say, okay, these are, these are what the developer's asking for. These are the things that they're proposing, and, and being that, that opportunity, that voice for, for our community. So, how can I do that? I can develop an opportunity where I can meet along with, with the community and just say, you know, I, obviously with having some other people there, so I'm not violating any sunshine, but at least that open communication is there. And let them know that these, these are the processes that are, are being considered. How is it that we can make sure that we are, we are protecting your most valuable possession, which is your property, and making sure that we are not encroaching, making sure that the, the things that are being introduced are not something that could be impactful negatively moving forward, years after I'm out of that DIAS, and that I'm able to leave a legacy in that sense. My, my job is to make sure that I am facilitating the conversations, that I'm facilitating, making sure that these negotiations are possible, and that I'm able to have that communication. Again, making sure that I'm following my procedures and what I need to do, making sure that I am being transparent and, and I'm being available to the community, as well as being, making sure that I'm respectful to the DIAS and making sure I'm respectful to the administration. So, moving forward, that's what I would like to do, is just be, having that opportunity to be available to the community, letting them know what the processes are happening as, as, as moving forward, and making sure that I'm following, again, the sunshine law, and that I'm making sure that I am able to be that facilitator in the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Knight, same question. Happy to repeat because it was a long one. Residents have complained that the structure of the current community meetings relative to encroaching development does not afford the residents the right to negotiate and mitigate issues such as density, traffic, buffering, connectivity, et cetera, with developments, which would be memorialized into a developer's agreement. If elected, how would you change the structure of the current community meetings to afford residents the right to negotiate with developers to accomplish meaningful resolution of concerned issues?
Well, I think we, we do need the, I just lost my thought. For the, the building process, you know, people, they want their large lots and stuff like that. I think that's something that we should, when a builder comes out, we should be able to negotiate how we're building this neighborhood instead of building right on top of each other. Also, it's like I got a, where I live, I have a big lot also, and I wouldn't want to be approached on also either. So, I, I would like to, you know, talk to the, the residents of Apopka and find out what they're wanting, and bring it up to the, the council meeting and, and make sure they're being listened to and getting what they, they want.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nesta, same question. Happy to repeat if needed.
I'm good, thank you. I, I think the answer to this, it's twofold. So, it's, it's having an open line of communication with the residents of Apopka. This goes back to my real estate experience. This is right on my real estate experience. Been doing this for over a decade now. I have my master's in real estate. I understand how to communicate, not only with residents of Apopka, to understand what they are truly wanting, and then advocate for it. I've been doing it for a decade. I also understand how to communicate with the developer. I understand what their bottom-line number is. I understand where they can move some things around and effectively communicate. That's going to be key. So, as long as you have somebody in place on city council to negotiate for you, again, which I've been doing on the, for our citizens for years, I've been advocating for their, their, their dollars and their biggest asset for years, making sure that they're getting the most out of their asset and protecting their values as much as possible. As long as you have somebody on city council negotiating for you, you won't feel like you're not being negotiated for. You will have a representative for you, and I think that's key, is having somebody with my type of experience. I've been negotiating for years. I understand it, and I understand how these developers work, and I understand how to communicate with them effectively. And being able to communicate effectively is how we're going to bridge this 11-year gap of a golf course that hasn't been functioning and middle ground and all that. We'll get to a final conclusion, and that's going to be key, is having somebody that understands how to communicate effectively on the issues, especially with development. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Velasquez, same thing, and happy to repeat if needed.
Would you?
I will. Residents have complained that the structure of the current community meetings relative to encroaching development does not afford the residents the right to negotiate and mitigate issues such as density, traffic, buffering, connectivity, and et cetera, with developers, which would be memorialized into a developer's agreement. If elected, how would you change the structure of the current community meetings to afford- the structure of the current community meetings to afford residents the right to negotiate with developers to accomplish meaningful resolution of concerned issues?
What we do have in place, the city of Apopka does have in place, where the residents can, uh, learn how, uh, the developments are being, uh, presented. Uh, and we have the Development Review Committee, which, uh, is when the developer comes in and is presenting what his plans are to build. We also have the Planning and Zoning Board, and both those boards are open to the public. What I would do differently, or I would suggest, would be to change the times that they, uh, are available to the public, 'cause a lot of times those meetings take place when the public cannot really come out and hear what the plans are. And then, and it's an opportunity for them to hear about the development, and it's an opportunity for them to also express what their concerns are. As the commissioner, uh, our job is to get those, uh, to get the minutes of the boards that were met, and to sit down and realize, is this something that the community is happy with? By that time, a lot of the members in the different communities already expressing concerns, and that's where we become sort of their advocate. And by the time they come to the city council meeting, that's where we become their advocate. We become the voice for those residents to express what their concerns are in the communities that are being built around them. But there is an opportunity, because we do have the, uh, availability for the residents to come in and express their concerns with the developers at the boards that we already have set up in the city of Apopka.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Knight, you're up next, I believe, first, and the question is, it appears that one of the city's community development strategies is to permit and build large numbers of subdivisions in the city to increase the customer base downtown. Do you agree with that statement? If so, why or why not? And what strategies would you support to increase the customer base downtown to provide businesses greater sustainability?
Well, I don't agree with the, the building part. Uh, I think that's something we should slow down on. But to get people in our, our downtown area, uh, it needs to be, um, landscaped properly, so when you come downtown, it's something you wanna come to. It'll be enjoyable, um, just like the new downtown center, if they ever get that done. It'll be a nice area o- off of Sixth Street with, um, nice shop, shops and stuff like that. Uh, we need to do a facelift, lift of, off of 441. And I believe that's something that will, would bring people in and help, help the businesses, small businesses, and it'd probably bring new businesses. So, that's something that we need to do.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Nesta, same question, happy to repeat if needed.
I'm good, thank you. Uh, I, I don't feel that we're just arbitrarily building developments just to increase our customer base. Uh, I think that's a little myopic, uh, especially for just downtown. We have businesses all throughout, uh, Apopka, which obviously goes back to question four, three, in reference to, uh, urban sprawl. Apopka's big, it's growing. Um, so to say that it's specifically only benefiting downtown, um, uh, I, I don't completely agree with that. I think development has, uh, helped us, it's increased our tax base, I think, again, and which helps keep our taxes low overall. I think that's been beneficial. Um, I think when the, the, um, city center gets finished, I think that's gonna be an incredible, uh, venue for us. I think having the correct plan of what type of tenants we want and that is gonna be key as well to create a synergistic value. I think that is gonna be key as we move forward in this. And it'll also create something we've never had in Apopka, it's a walkable, walkability. I think that's gonna be key in our, um, approach, and how we're gonna be able to increase dollars to small businesses, is making sure that we have a cohesive plan that benefits all the businesses that are involved, and create something that you're not having to drive everywhere to get to it. You have something that's walkable right there. That's gonna be key, and I think that's what a lot of new residents in Apopka are looking for, and unfortunately are driving out to go experience, ironically, is walkability. They're driving to get there. Let's keep that in Apopka, and I think that's how we're gonna benefit most from that, is making sure that our synergistic value, uh, in all of our retail strip centers, things like that, uh, are planned cohesively to make sure they're benefiting one another. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Velasquez, same question, happy to repeat if needed.
Yes.
Okay. It appears that one of the city's commu- uh, city's community development strategies is to build and permit, or, I'm sorry, to permit and build large numbers of subdivisions in the city in order to increase its customer base downtown. Do you agree with that statement? Why or why not? And then what strategies would you support to increase the customer base downtown to provide greater sustainability for businesses?
Well, I, I don't agree with building more developments around downtown. Uh, what I do, uh, agree with is building mixed use, to be able to have commercial, some residential, and certainly to promote, uh, small businesses. When you have small businesses, then you have a, a, a variety of businesses that will keep the customer base coming downtown. We don't, we, right now, we have the Hilton Hotel, which is sort of an anchor now, and now we have little businesses coming in. And it's true, we want to be able to have a city downtown that has walkability. We also want to have a area where we can drive to, park our cars, and actually walk to the, uh, city downtown. We also want to be able to promote our park, Kitland Nelson Park, and to have some venues there, uh, that will promote, uh, our residents to come and have a good time and, and eat, walk, buy, and actually go sit down in the park. So, building more residence, uh, residential communities around it, we don't need that in the downtown area, but we do need some mixed use, which would be some apartments, uh, you know, some commercial and small businesses that would sustain the city downtown center.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Baron, same question, would you like me to repeat?
Just the first part, 'cause the second part I got, the first part.
It appears that one of the city's community development strategies is to permit and build large numbers of subdivisions in the city to increase its customer base downtown.
I don't approve the subdivisions in downtown, um, because my vision for downtown is the following. So, what we have on Fifth Street, we have a fantastic opportunity for us to leverage what we have there. We have just opened up a fantastic brewery, um, along with an Axe location. That shopping center, if we could negotiate with the owner to see if they're willing to sell it, um, gut that, that, uh, shopping center out and create a marketplace. We have fantastic entrepreneurs, fantastic restaurateurs within our community that we can leverage and showcase them there. And just down the street, if we, um, not, not too far, we can leverage on extending our bike trail from Sixth Street, uh, Sixth Street, Forest Avenue, I should say, and Sixth Street. We can extend our bike trail down to the town center, and that's where we can have a fantastic opportunity for people to ride golf carts, to ride their bicycles, to enjoy a weekend, um, in that facility, um, esp- especially now that we're going to have these small businesses that are going to be in this town center. Um, I feel that that would be a fantastic opportunity for us to leverage that, because our, our city will have not one location, but two locations that we can generally go from one, uh, from one way to another in a walkable, uh, uh, way that we can congregate and really fellowship, um, as a community. I think it would be fantastic. Um, I don't think a subdivision would necessarily benefit us there, um, because that is something that is, can, should be considered for small businesses, uh, businesses that wanna come into, into our downha- our downtown, and we can techni- we can leverage, um, the opportunities of having both that marketplace as well as our town center. So that's what I would like to see.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Nesta, you're up first this question, and again, it is a longer one. How would you use community redevelopment area funds to accomplish the following desired city outcomes? Increased workforce housing, improved walkability, which we've talked about, infrastructure improvements, protect and protect community, uh, current residents and business investments, and attract quality development. What CRA strategy goals would you use to support those outcomes?
It's a loaded question. So, increased walkability, we've already discussed to an extent, but there's opportunities for our city to partner with, uh, similar to what candidate Kenny had said, that, um, w- we'd be able to partner with other, uh, landowners or business owners, um, real estate owners, to be able to say, you know, let's build up a, an incredible, um, uh, this, uh, second city center almost, or a retail strip center, to be able to help them, um, incentivize small businesses to come in. I think incentives, using those to incentivize bringing in businesses that we want, again, creating a cohesive plan up front, and then incentivizing businesses outside of Apopka or within, uh, that meet that plan, so that it creates that walkability. Um, we go on to, eh, infrastructure and, and ensuring that infrastructure's there, uh, again, that goes in line with creating, making sure we're talking to developers and creating those, uh, incentives as we go through. Creating cohesive plan up front, that's gonna be key, instead of just picking one spot here or there, creating a cohesive plan and then moving forward with that. Um, protecting investments i- i- in reference to how these funds are gonna be used to protect investments. If we can partner with the, uh, developers and the landowners, or the current real estate developers, um, and business owners, incentivize them, that is gonna increase property values around that. We're all gonna be able to be lifted up through that type of development and those type of plans. So again, creating a cohesive plan through open communication with the citizens, uh, and the business owners, real estate owners, and understanding, again, where developers are, where their little sweet spots are, that's gonna be key to making sure that we're spending those dollars correctly and, and protecting investments, infrastructure, creating a walkable city that a lot of people are looking for. Thank you.
Okay. And Ms. Velasquez, same question, happy to repeat if needed.
Well, the CRA was created to, uh, to increase the, uh, to increase the community that had blight. We want to eliminate the blight in a CRA area. So what's important is that the money that is, re- the revenue that is gained from the CRA development, we should be able to put it back into that community to improve the infrastructure, lighting, streets, and to encourage, as he had said, developers to come in and see how they can build into this community with some incentives to, to change the condition of the neighborhoods that are in the CRA. Um, and so that is something that we're working on, because that part of the city center is in the CRA, and that's what they're working on right now. And by creating the city center, we're changing the community around it, we're actually improving it. And one of the things that is important is the residents that are living within the CRA, to make sure that they are the benefactors of the improvements that are being brought into their community. So, as we go forward, uh, spending the revenue, we have to make sure that it stays in the community and that the benefactors are the residents of that community.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Baron, same question, and again, happy to repeat if needed.
Yes, please.
How would you use community redevelopment area funds to accomplish the following desired city outcomes? Increased workforce housing, improved walkability, infrastructure improvements, and protect current resident and business investments, and attract quality development? And what CRA strategy goals would you support to accomplish those outcomes?
That's loaded. Well, um, so just this year, the state of Florida passed a, um, a House Bill 1339, and this House Bill is really geared towards the workforce housing. Um, and I think we can leverage that opportunity. Why? Because, um, that would allow us to, um, as a, as, as a, a city, as well as, um, our, our, our min- our city as a whole and our government, we are able to, um, basically strategize with that developer where they can build these homes. And we wanna make sure we build these homes in a location where there's transportation accessible to, uh, the workforce community, where we are making sure that we are, um, supporting this, uh, this area, and making sure that we are, um, it's in line with what we want to bring, uh, to our city, to make sure that our character and our charm of our city remains the same. Um, yet, at the same time, we're providing that opportunity for, um, for a developer to create a work housing, uh, section or area for us that, um, brings that charm and that, uh, character to our city, um, as well as leveraging the, um, the, uh, opportunity for the leakage fees, and making sure that we are, um, also adding, eh, if there's additional, um, amenities that they're going to bring, again, that it is, um, in line with what we want to, uh, bring to our city, that we want to make sure, um, that it is, uh, creating that, that live here, work here, play here environment that we are longing, um, in our city. It, it is paramount that we have it, it is paramount that we move forward with that, um, and that we have that in the forefront moving forward. So as commissioner, that would be my, um, my job, to make sure that we are able to leverage that opportunity and really leverage on this, uh, House Bill 1339.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Knight, same question. Yes? How would you use community redevelopment area funds to accomplish the following desired city outcomes? Increased workforce housing, improved walkability, infrastructure improvements, protect current resident and business investments, and attract quality development? And then what CRA strategy goals would you support to accomplish those outcomes?
As we know, the city's already working on the walkable area. Um, there's also, we need to have an event area also within that Sixth Street area and Station Street, and some of them, they're gonna also have near Station Street some, I guess there're gonna be condos or something going up for housing in that downtown area. So, the walkable pass, um, path all the way down Sixth Street to the new downtown center is definitely, and for, for the CRA, that's to help, uh, businesses or homeowners in the area to help improve their businesses or their homes. So that's something that we need to encourage these people to, to use to help their place look better in the downtown area, because I'm hoping that's coming pretty quick. Um, and of course, we gotta have the infrastructure in place, which, uh, I'm pretty sure they're working on that to get that done. They got parking lots going in, so that's where I'm at on, that's...
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Velasquez, this question's gonna come to you first, so another question, and this question is, the city has a number of enclaves, which is a county property within city limits, is how we're defining it, within municipal boundaries that subjects those residents to a lower level of service and puts a strain on the city's public safety services. What strategies would you employ to unfold those enclaves into the city?
Annexation. That's the most important thing for these enclaves, is the annexation. So there is a, uh, so that the city services, uh, are given to them, because some of the enclaves that are in, within our city, uh, we can't service that area. So it would be annexations. At this stage, we need to kind of close off all those enclaves and talk to the residents that do live in those enclaves, and provide them with an opportunity to compare the services that they would get. Uh, a lot of it has to do with the tax base, and show them the benefit of being within the city. And that would provide better services, public safety, sanitation, fire. Uh, so definitely would be for the city administration to start, not aggressively, but at least going out into these enclaves and encouraging the residents to consider annexation. And also, uh, to, uh, you know, contact the, uh, Orange County also, and, and encourage them, uh, to allow the annexation for, uh, the city of Apopka.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Baron, same question, would you like to repeat?
No, thank you. So, um, as commissioner, my goal would be make sure that I'm facilitating the communication between our Orange County Commissioner, District Two, as well as, um, our, my seat, um, to make sure that I'm, I'm speaking with her about the, uh, these enclave properties, to determine exactly how is it that we're able to annex, and if we're not able to annex, then how are we able collectively, between the city as well as the county, how are we able to make sure that these areas are properly served, that we're making sure that they are valued, that they are appreciated, um, that they are an important part of our community, and we need to make sure that we, um, are, have that open communication. So, if I'm not able to physically be able to annex that section, I am able to leverage an opportunity to have that discussion with our, our county mayor, our, our commissioner, um, our Orange County Commissioner as well, to facilitate that conver- County Commissioner as well, to facilitate that conversation, to say, how is it that we can come together and collaborate in making sure that this area is well-served? And how are we able to either take it to Tallahassee to figure out how we can get more funding to that specific area? But it's important, it's important that these enclaves properties are represented, it's important that they are appreciated, and if I'm, as Commissioner, that will be one of my goals, is to ensure that we're opening up those lines of communication, that we're coming to the table, having these hard conversations, and making sure that I'm able to leverage the opportunity of being as Commissioner, to be able to say, hey, these are the opportunities that we have, that we can bring to the area, and this is what it would look like. It's going to take not only the city, the county, the state, but it's also going to take the community, and how are they willing to invest in that as well?
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Knight, same question?
Yeah, following off of Diane Velasquez, these enclaves have been an issue for a long time. It frustrates me like crazy. There's a, it's like there's a street over here off of Monroe Mason, part of it's city, and then the other half of the same road is county. And same with Monroe with Christiana, it changes from the city to Orange County. So when you call Fire Department, Police Department, they ask exactly where you're at. Well, a lot of people don't know that that's Orange County or city. I mean, I've been here 53 years, so I know, you know, what's Orange County and what's city, but most people don't. So you call the Police Department and they say, well, where exactly are you at? Well, in my opinion, it don't matter, just come, you know? So that's something I'd like to work on, annexing, you know, talking to the homeowners about annexing in and give them the information on how to do it, and, because the city has good incentives, you know, garbage, I mean, their garbage system is awesome, I mean, you can't find that anywhere. The medical ambulance service and fire service, we've got the best, I think, around. So this is some of the stuff I would like to talk to these homeowners about and seeing about getting them to annex in, and it's going to make it easier on everybody, you know, it's going to make it easier on them, on the Police Department, Fire Department. So that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. Mr. Nesta, same question?
I think applying a blanket strategy of annexation is a little tricky there. I just feel that a lot of these homeowners enjoy not being part of the city, which is okay, but to Kenneth Knight's point is that we have streets that are split in half, which creates a huge issue between Orange County and Apopka, who services what, are people being serviced correctly versus not, and that's an issue. So I think articulating correctly to these homeowners the benefits of being part of Apopka, but trying to blanket force them into the city, I think, is a dangerous move and can backfire on us. So I think doing it correctly with a cohesive plan, to what I've said before, having a cohesive plan upfront, understanding which places we would like to annex, which places we would not, who does want to annex, who doesn't, I think is going to be key moving forward. We can't just say, hey, annex, let's do it. We need to talk to the homeowners, landowners, whatever they may be, and have an open line of communication with them. Articulating correctly is going to be key to having these homeowners annex with Apopka. And again, having that cohesive plan is going to be key. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next question goes to Ms. Barron first, so here we go. Not quite as long, so it's good. If elected, what initiatives would you champion in the city budget to improve the lives of all residents of Apopka, including concerns related to the residents of South Apopka?
That is a fantastic question. So again, it would be just to sit down, look, review the budget, see what has already been in place in the budget for that, for South Apopka, the other areas as well, and determining whether or not we have been good stewards with that, and making sure that we, the money that has been implemented for South Apopka, to make sure that we are using it effectively, that the money is used to where we are, again, good stewards, that we're serving South Apopka the best way we can, and to make sure that those areas that are not annexed in the city, that they're being served just as well. So what I would like to champion is to collaborate with the community and really start our own beautification, just get with the community leaders and say, let's make this happen. If we can't, if we can't do this, if we can't, if we can do this, we can do this collectively, and what is that going to look like? So even by just planting seeds for grass, planting small plants in an area, beautifying a location, mowing a lawn, helping a neighbor out who needs a home to be painted, all these things are possible. We just need a community effort and somebody that could really champion that opportunity. So what I would like to do as Commissioner is to make sure that I'm working with the community leaders, making sure that I can gather the masses, if you will, and really drive a beautification portion to our South Apopka, and then, of course, talking with our county mayor, as well as our commissioner, to say, okay, these are the things that we would like to implement in this area, however, in yours, this is the other things we would like to try to implement, and how can we collaborate those efforts? The community's wanting it, we are able to do that, and if we can have that collaboration would be a fantastic movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knight, same question. Yes, the question is, if elected, what initiatives would you champion in the city budget to improve the lives of all residents of Apopka, including concerns related to the residents of South Apopka?
Well, first of all, I never did like the term "South Apopka." I think, you know, they should be considered Apopka, like everybody else, because we don't have east, west, or whatever. So that's one thing I just don't like. But I would like to see, you know, plants planted around certain areas cleaned up and areas that people can't keep mowed, you know, help them out mowing, because I think all of them should be part of Apopka, not, even the Orange County side, you know, that's all of Apopka, but a lot of people feel left out, you know, because they can't get services out there, they don't get the services like Apopka. So that's some of the things I would like to work on, and, you know, I know they paved streets out there recently, but there's places that just need to be cleaned up, and I think that's something that we should have in the budget to fix up, and, you know, there's some homes that's out there that's rundown, that I think there's something we should be able to do, whether it's the landlord that's renting them out to fix them up, you know, and make it look better out there. So that's some of the things that I think we should do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nesta, same question?
I think tapping back into what we already discussed, the CRA funds, they're already there, we don't need to create new initiatives, let's use the funds that are there, and let's educate the citizens to what they already have available to them. Those funds can be used, and I just read, and I don't remember the exact dollars, but there's X amount of funds available to each homeowner if they want to beautify their property in some way. Educating the citizens, I think, is going to be key to what resources are available to them. That's key. Again, there's no new initiatives, that let's use what's already there, we don't need to keep spending more dollars, let's use what's already there. I think something that's incredible, I know none of us live in the southern part of Apopka, so I don't think we understand truly the needs of anybody that does live in that area. I think having an open line of communication, creating some type of open forum for them to come, those citizens to come communicate with us, those residents in that area, what issues are you seeing? What do you want specifically handled? And direct dollars that specific way. I think just throwing money at anything is a waste without a cohesive plan upfront. Through that, that'll help to create pride and ownership. That's going to create increased wealth through their property values, and they're going to be able to tap into something maybe that they've never been able to tap into before, and that's that wealth within their property. Increasing that is going to be able to change their lifestyle here, and again, as Commissioners, I feel like we're lifestyle champions, basically, for the city. We create a good lifestyle, and we need to do that wholeheartedly throughout the whole city. Another thing I think is that we should adapt, and this is kind of initiative that would be on the budget, is a beautification crew, someone that goes in and does little fine touches maybe throughout the city. The signs in South Apopka are pretty rundown, and it's something that a beautification crew, doesn't take a lot to just update it, just get them fresh and new, and again, it creates that pride and ownership, increases property values, and then increases wealth throughout that area. That's going to be key, and again, creating that cohesive plan upfront to initiate that is going to be key. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Velasquez, same question?
I feel the same way. We have the dollars there, and the CRA on the south side of Apopka is really to learn what their needs are, and by working with the county commissioner, because a lot of the south side of Apopka is in the county, and working together with the county commissioner and the city would help to beautify what's in South Apopka. Also, another avenue is to really go out and get some grants. There are so many grants out there that we can get, that doesn't have to come out of the taxpayers' budget, the city budget, that we can also solicit and bring into the south side of Apopka. And it is correct, a lot of the signage in the South Apopka is very worn, the streets need to be fixed, the roads need lines, lights. I am speaking with someone there who is very concerned with South Apopka and concerned about the services that they're receiving. So it is really connecting with the leaders that are in South Apopka, that they will be the voices that will help us as Commissioners what their needs are, and for us to start to work on a priority list of what we can help them with, and how do we get the money into their community? And we have it through the CRA, we just have to make sure that they are the benefactors of that revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some good and bad news for you. The good news is that was the last official question. Okay, so we were at the end of the questions, but what we'd like you to do is take a couple minutes and tell the audience here and the folks who may be listening at home why they should vote for you and how that will affect them, and we're going to start with Ms. Velasquez here.
Well, I was formerly the City Commissioner in 2014 to 2018, and a lot of the projects that we are working on now, or that's coming to fruition, was something that I had worked on as a Commissioner. From that time, I got heavily involved in the community, and through it, I really got to learn what Apopka was about, and I really became part of the growth in Apopka. And it's something that I have always been doing, even out of office, was to stay involved in the community, and I just feel that coming back to the city of Apopka, I come back with an experience and much more wiser and understanding our community. I worked for the last two years with the county commissioner, and I'm realizing the resources that we can tap upon to help Apopka in this growth, and especially right now through COVID, I feel that that experience will be beneficial and will benefit our community. Something that I didn't have when I was the Commissioner was to have a line of communication with the county. I didn't know how to tap upon them for resources, but that's something that I have learned, and I feel that coming back to the city of Apopka, I will be able to do that, and I will be able to work with the county commissioner, and together, we can help Apopka grow and become more beautiful and bring more services into the city of Apopka.
Thank you. Mr. Nesta?
Thank you. So I've lived here over 25 years. I grew up here, I was raised here, my family lives here, I met my wife here, I hope to raise my kids here, and I built my business here. I understand the city fairly well, I understand the pain points, I understand what makes it absolutely amazing. I understand what it takes to grow the city correctly through both experience and education. I understand development, I understand how to talk to developers, I understand how to make sure that we are benefited as citizens through development and not just developing blindly. I understand education right now is the hot-button topic, and we need to make sure that we're supporting our teachers correctly, we need to make sure we're supporting our students correctly, as well as the parents. That's key right now, and with the intricateness of my wife being a teacher, I understand the needs, and I understand how to influence correctly. I think having a strong leader with that background on the council is going to be key, especially during this COVID pandemic season, we have to adapt quickly to this. This is not what the past was, we're moving forward now, and we have to be able to adapt quickly, be creative with how we do move forward, and make sure that we're ensuring we protect what makes Apopka great while we're also growing, because a lot of people want to move here, because of the incredible ecotourism, the large lots, the urban sprawl, as much as it may be negative, we can do it correctly with our creative sources of income. I ask for your vote, I truly believe that I am the best candidate up here for your vote. Please vote November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knight?
Yeah, like I said, I've been living, I was born at Orangeville, and lived in Apopka my whole life, 53 years. I've seen a lot of growth and changes in Apopka. I think a lot of people, I have a page called Apopka Then and Now, and I put out issues all the time in Apopka, and I have people talk about things that need to be done, and I push the issue when I go to the council meetings about getting things done. And I think I'm that person to get things done, and also, I'm a member of the, I do charity with the Apopka Elks, just like Diane Velasquez, we do a lot there. I'm a member of the VFW and OCRAC, I do a lot of community things that go around that we have, you know, whether it's helping people do sandbags during hurricanes and stuff like that, so I do a lot in the community, I go out mow people's yards for them, and, you know, and that's what helped our neighborhood, is just getting out, because I don't live in a, it's a, it's a lower-class neighborhood, I live over off of Christiana and Monroe, and I've helped a lot of people, you know, just by showing them stuff or giving them the information, how to, you know, and they clean up their neighborhoods, and, you know, one person starts doing it, and it kind of has a, everybody else starts doing it, so... But I just think that I have a lot of knowledge of what's going on in Apopka, I go to the council meetings, and I'm concerned about, just like Rock Springs Ridge and stuff like that, them building out there, so I think for myself, I don't, I'm a coattail person, you know, if somebody wants you to vote for this, you know, I'm going to listen to the citizens and see what they want, and then go from there. So, thank you, and I'd like to get your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Barron?
Thank you. So I'm a mom, I'm a wife, I'm a former business owner, I'm a retired special agent from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. I've been in the community for eight years, and I, as a mom, have dove into my children's schools, volunteered, and as a former business owner, I understand the issues that our city has. I've worked it, I've lived it, I've been in an integral role in it to really understand the struggles and, as well as the successes that our city has. I'm part of the Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce, I'm an ambassador. I communicate with other small businesses and relate with their struggles. I'm a resident here, I understand the frustrations that we have, and I want to be able to continue to be that community advocate and servant for our city. That has been my role in this life, is to be that voice to those that have not, that do not have a voice, and I want to be able to continue doing that at the DAS. I want to be able to represent our community the best way I can with the, with my knowledge, my skills, and my experiences that I have. There's a lot that I still need to learn, I'm humble enough to say that, but at the same time, I'm willing to learn what that is, I'm willing to understand what other roles I need to play as far as being a Commissioner in the DAS, and I'm humble enough to say that I want to be able to really continue to be that voice. So please consider voting for me, Yasenia Jessie Barron, City of Apopka Council, Seat Two, on November 3rd. Thank you so much.
Kenneth, thank you very much for your candid, thoughtful answers, we appreciate that. Those of us in the audience and those listening at home, on behalf of the Apopka Chief and all the citizens of Apopka, I want to thank you for being here tonight, for participating, for giving us your thoughtful positions on items of concern to all of us who live here. Like you, we all want this to be a great, growing community, vibrant community, and I'd also like to- And I'd also like to thank the online community who may be listening today, because they're the ones that are going to be making these decisions about which one of you is going to be that next elected official. I hope the information has been informative to those listening at home. I hope that you've enjoyed this. We've made this not combative, as some have been this week. And I wish you good luck in all of your campaigns as we move toward November 3rd. I'd also like to thank the Victory Church here, including pastors Ben and Doug, for letting us use their facility and for using that opportunity to be so close here in downtown Apopka. Also thank the Apopka Chief for their willingness to sponsor this and to be here. And we look forward to their active participation in this election as we go forward. Finally, we urge the citizens of all of Apopka to understand all of your positions on these issues and to understand all the issues that happen at the state and federal level as well. And we urge you to exercise your right to vote in this important election. But not only this election, but every election cycle. And as everyone already knows, every vote counts and everybody's voice is important. So we like that to do there. I wish you, candidates, safe travels and good luck on your way home. If you are traveling from your living room to your dining room at home, we wish you safe travels there as well. And thank everyone for coming. Thank you very much. Appreciate your input.